Good evening to you all and thank you for being present. This is our regularly scheduled work session for the month of July and so we won't be doing things we do at our regular meeting with other business, but much of time to share information and receive reports, so that's what's on our agenda this evening. So I'm going to begin our meeting by asking the clerk to call the roll if she will.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Protem Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much and obviously we have a quorum with all of our members present this evening, so thank you for being in attendance. Council, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda and maybe before we have a motion on that, Mr. Manager, would you want to inform us of maybe a couple of other items for closed session, is that right?
Yes, we want to add items to the closed session. You have one for regarding litigation, so that'll cover one other item we're going to cover and then we need...
Okay.
And I'll have a citation for that, you can look it up by the time.
Yeah, when we're ready to go into session, we'll have a site for that, is that right? Yeah, okay, alright. Okay, Council, with that notation made with an extra segment in the closed session, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Booting second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and it is so ordered, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm not aware of any presentations this evening, okay, so nothing on that, sure enough. Alright, under Item D, Discussion and Reports, we have two items there and we'll take those in the order that they're on the agenda, so the first one is a presentation relating to the Jürgen and Meadowbrook master plans and I believe Ms. Sonia Shaw is going to be the main presenter. Good evening, Ms. Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn and Council, I hope everyone's doing well.
Thank you, I think we all are, so the floor is yours for your presentation.
Absolutely, well, thanks again for being with you tonight. We have McAdams here to present conceptual plan updates for you for both the Jürgen property as well as Meadowbrook and with us tonight are Swayda Nanakar and Rachel Cotter, both with McAdams and at this point, I will ask McAdams to share the screen and move forward with the presentation.
Okay.
My name is Rachel Cotter and I am a landscape architect with McAdams. I think I have presented to you all before on the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We're really excited to be here back this evening and share some of the ideas that have come out of the planning process for both Jürgen and Meadowbrook Park master plans. Next slide. So, tonight we wanted to review the project process, the work that's been completed to date and everything that we have remaining to complete before adoption of both of these plans. We will be discussing the Meadowbrook concept followed by the Jürgen Park concept and then hope to have a bit of an open discussion and present next steps and receive any feedback or comments from you all. Next slide. So, wanted to review the schedule to date, it's been quite some time since we've presented on either of these two park concepts or visited this topic with you all and your feedback and input is incredibly important to the process, so I wanted to share with you a couple of the maybe perceived gaps in the schedule here. About a year ago, we began the site due diligence process for Meadowbrook Park and that included a site analysis, some environmental assessments and a cultural resources assessment. We also began the Jürgen Park study and that was initiated a little bit after Meadowbrook because we determined that it would be more beneficial to the town and from a planning perspective to plan both of these parks simultaneously. The Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan revealed quite a few needs and demands by the community and we wanted to be able to look at serving these holistically, so we're able to meet many of the community's needs through the combination of these two plans and then develop each site more focused around the opportunities and constraints of the actual site conditions. We then moved into the community engagement process in early September and that lasted through October, so I believe the last time we actually presented on these plans to you all was October 3rd of last year and that was just reporting on some very preliminary site analysis where we are in the project and how we're planning to move forward. We took a brief pause on this process and completed the comprehensive master plan in March of 2020 and then we restarted the conceptual development of both these projects just about in February and so this is an ongoing process moving forward where we have looked at the previous community engagement, developed these concept plans and we're receiving input from a number of different interest groups. The first was the Park and Rec Advisory Committee and we are now receiving input from you and then we will also be receiving input from the general public, so everyone is going to be providing input on the same plans and we will be incorporating those comments into a final master plan which you will also be able to comment on before adoption. So the next steps of the process will be to incorporate those comments and revisions. We will also be completing a pro forma for the Jürgen Park and we are completing the pro forma for the Jürgen Park specifically because the results of the cultural resources assessment for Meadowbrook did reveal that there are some legally binding limitations on what we can develop there. Therefore, to develop some of the more active recreation elements such as ball fields and athletic fields, we would have to propose those at Jürgen, those are some of the more revenue generating types of facilities and therefore wanted to do the pro forma for that park specifically. Once all that work is completed and we've developed a written summary report, we will be re-presenting all of this information to you, providing illustrative renderings and then you would be able to provide some additional comment and eventually adoption of both of these comprehensive plans. Next slide. So we've done quite a bit of public engagement to date including the presentation that we gave you all last October. We also had over 200 survey responses as part of the comprehensive planning process that were used to inform some of the recommendations you'll see here today. We had a visioning sessions where we talked about theming program elements and some character ideas and that had 30 attendees. We did an online public opinion survey which had 225 responsive responses and then did seven site specific interviews with specific individuals who could provide us with a little bit more detailed information regarding some of the stories, the history and the future vision for these studies. So we had a really great turnout in terms of community engagement, we're really excited about the feedback that we received and the enthusiasm about these parks. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Swayda Nanakar who has developed the concept plan for Meadowbrook.
Thank you, Rachel. Good evening, everybody, I'm Swayda Nanakar, I'm a landscape architect at McAdams and today I'm going to present the concepts for Meadowbrook Park. So Meadowbrook Park is a rich tapestry of stories, these are the stories that we want to share with our future generations. They're the stories of golf, family gatherings, social events, education, health, fitness, dances, smiles and laughter, layers upon layers that have been built on this property since last 60 years. These stories were shared with us from the people who had first had experience playing and working the golf course and show some of the comments that we got and the stories that were shared by some of the residents who worked at golf courses. Very interesting quotes here, Mr. Williams wanted to share with us, the hot dog stand at the golf course was a common social place to hang out at the porch, at the clubhouse. Dr. Adams shared with us that this was an elite club for elite black people, it was a learning golf course and he jokingly called it that. They used to call this an unorthodox golf because a lot of people who played at the golf course did not actually have any formal training involved. Many of them were cadres and many of them learned just by observation and they used to call it an unorthodox golf. And he also shared very pleasantly that it was a place for the whole family to spend the weekend, eat and play the round of golf. Ms. Ernstine shared that it, very proudly shared that it was a big thing back in the day and so all these stories and the quotes have inspired these concepts that we are presenting today. We are organizing the park site into preservation and education, community gathering and quiet reflection as where these programming elements have been arranged on the site. So preservation and education would include the renovated petting golf, the firsty program, existing pond and renovated fishing pier. Existing greens will be adapted to include views and vistas of the landscape, there is a location for driving range and then renovated supporting framework of parking, clubhouse, picnic shelters. The community gathering spaces would include disc golf, tennis, concession stands, family area that would include picnic, splash pad, possibly an amphitheater and then the trails, public art and open space become the framework for quiet reflection on the site. So the next slide includes how these elements are arranged on the site. I'll share the concepts with you just a little bit on how these elements are arranged on both of these concepts that we are, I'm calling it a celebration of that historic scenic and ecologic cultural attributes that are being celebrated on this site. So that brings us to the first concept, we are calling this breaking through concept. It is the idea that golf was predominantly a sport that was considered for white people. African-American community broke through that belief and created their own identity in this sport and it really became a symbol of golf movement in the 1960s and beyond. And emergence of this confident, powerful and educated African-American golf community in Carnet area and we are presenting this breaking through concept, preserving it as gateways, rooms and windows elements. The gateways are the sculptural elements that convey the idea of breaking through, the windows are the elements that show the views and vistas of the site and the roofs become the spaces along the trails that share that stories of this once golfed site. And so as you can see on this concept diagram, we have our clubhouse renovations where the number C element, the B and E represent the new playground and splash pad element, the walking trails take you through the park property, the number F is our disc golf area through the woods, number I is the first tree, the program element on one of the fairways, number K is the outlook room because this is one of the strategic points where if you stand you get really nice undulating views and vistas of this parkland and so as you move through the site, number M is one of the primary gateway that we are calling it if you are entering from Hebron Church Road. So this new property that the town acquired along with the Meadowbrook property, this new property does not have the same restrictions as the actual golf course, so the supporting framework for the park will be accommodated on this portion of the site and that makes this entry gateway an essential component, so if you are coming from Hebron Church Road that creates that sense of arrival and that breaking through concept is shown on some of the images that I'm going to share just in a little bit on this, in this presentation. So if you, if you're coming from Hebron Church, you come to this number M which is the entry gateway and as you move through the site, the pink line shows a historic walk that is symbolizing the existing driving range area and people will be able to use that as a history walk or a celebratory landscape to learn more about the history of this golf course. So here you can see some of the images that we have collected that start to convey this idea of the breaking through concept by showing this sculptural elements of gateways, windows and capturing the views and vistas of the site. Some of the other elements would include the swings or the open space where people can gather and enjoy or they can have a space for quiet reflection. There can be storied sculptures, colors incorporated in the landscape to enjoy the different seasons, restoration of the existing landscape and incorporation of soundscapes as an alternative sensory element on the site. And some of the other program elements would include a new play area, one element that symbolizes once there was a pool on the side so that symbolizes that element, including play elements that again convey that golf course experience for kids to play around on mounds and valleys and then all of this would be connected via different hierarchy of trade elements for people to use this park as for walking, biking, running, all different activities. So then that brings us to the second concept, the second concept, we are calling it higher grounds, landscape of memories. Now this concept relies a little more on the storytelling aspect and the idea that actually came to us from one of the speeches from Michelle Obama where she said, "You cannot let anybody pull you down if you do, you don't have to go to their level, but you have to go up high" and that going up high gives you a new perspective to look at things a little differently and so for this concept, we are calling the historic greens from the original golf course become these higher grounds that tell the story as you move through this landscape. And so I will walk you all through the nine greens that are on the site, so we will start with number one, it's an undulating topography proposed on number one green and it symbolizes the struggles and challenges of early African-American enthusiasts, golf enthusiasts and while it is a symbol of struggle, it is also a place for hope because it's placed adjacent to a new play area, the renovated petting golf and a new water play, interactive water play element as well. And so as you move from number, number one, the greens, you are walking on the trail and there is a seasonal landscape of spring flowers that symbolizes the idea of a seed being sown to create a new golf course and so along this route, we will be planting the 35 trees, commemorate the first 35 founding members of the golf course and these flowering trees will be native to our region. And so this trail brings us to the number two green and this symbolizes the land purchase milestone. Now this green is very close to I-40 and we want to create an alternative soundscape in this area to mitigate the effect of oncoming traffic on 40 and create this alternative site elements that are sensory, that take a little bit of those, that impact from the development away from the site. As you move through the site, number three green becomes a symbol of golf course construction and there is an amazing rock outcrop on this site that we are symbolizing as the construction. People shared with us that when they started building the golf course, they didn't have any formal training, a lot of them were volunteers, they didn't know how to operate the machines and all that and so this number three becomes that learning aspect that can be further enhanced by creating an outdoor classroom area here where people can learn different things, inspire each other to learn something new. Then as you move to the side, the number four green becomes a symbol of progress moving up on the site and as I mentioned earlier, when we visited the site, we really liked this particular point on the site because it has that really amazing vistas and views from the side, so that becomes that a pause along the landscape where people can start reflecting on the site. And then as you move along, number five is our peak of the celebration and this is when there were 150 members of the golf club and that starts to celebrate that history, it's the highest, it's also the highest point of the site and it becomes that celebratory landscape. So as, again, as you're coming from the Hebron Church Road, this becomes that ceremonial pathway where people, if you're coming from this road, this becomes a shorter history education route, but if you're walking through the site, you come to this arrival point where you can really start seeing at peak of the landscape as well. And so some of the other elements that are incorporated here include tennis courts, basketball courts, parking lot, a new architecture building here and then as you walk around the site, there is a nice open lawn space here and amphitheater area that starts to bring that aspect of social gathering spaces, so just bringing the community together, again, that symbolizing that peak of the golf course celebrations. And number six, again, it's a continuation of that where we will be proposing pergolas or shelters where weddings and parties and family reunions can take place. Now as you move along that corridor again, number seven, it's a symbol, symbolizing the integration, it's a great milestone in the history of our country, but as one of the members from the golf course shared with us, it also started that decline of the golf course, decline in the memberships at certain period in time and so this number seven becomes a place of quiet reflection and solitude for somebody who's walking the trail. So as you move along the side, we have number eight that is the symbolized, that is symbolizing the ownership by St. Augustine College, now another educational institution who became part of this golf course, so number three where we had our outdoor classroom, number eight, the symbol of St. Augustine's ownership and number two, this sort of creates that educational component hub on site in itself. So as you start moving from number eight and go to number nine, this is, we are calling it back to, towards a new future, creating a new hope and that is symbolized by renovating the existing driving range and again connecting it with this new hope for the future generations where we are sharing these stories with our kids and moving this legacy forward. And so some of the precedent images that we wanted to share with you, that show the symbolism, the struggles and challenges with the undulating landscape, the views and vistas we can create with planting, spring flowers, tulips, daisies, any kinds of seasonal interest to attract crowds, the 35 commemorative trees to celebrate our founding golf members and then the, again, adding color to the landscape, soundscapes, creating these rock outcrops and some play elements, outdoor classrooms, the bridges that would go over the wet, existing wetland areas, enhanced landscape, symbolism through sculptures and celebratory landscape, amphitheater, shelters, elements that will bring the community Places to reflect and telling the story of isolation and using the site for educational resource for outdoor programming, bringing kids close to nature, environmental programming and then towards the new future that shows that aspect of, again, play elements, water elements and bringing people close to nature again. And so the last slide shows some of the newer, modern elements that will be added on the newly acquired property, basketball courts, tennis, pickleball and renovated driving range as well. And so I think with this, we finish up our concept description for the two parks and I'll hand it back to Rachel to talk about Jürgen Park.
Thanks, Swayda, and I imagine there are a number of questions on both of these park concepts and we do want to field those towards the end of the presentation. I will move through the Jürgen Park concept plan at this time. This park was really based on, next slide please, the ideas of preservation, adventure and action or an active type of park and that those three concept words or phrases or themes were a direct result from the community engagement process and the statistically valid survey is part of the comprehensive plan. So this idea of preservation and passive recreation would be represented with program elements such as the preserved farmstead structures, the preservation of the pecan grove, an event lawn, some sort of event pavilion at either the old barn or the existing homes on site, could be agricultural demonstrations and then an addition of some restroom structures. Adventure is represented through natural surface trails, zip lines and treetop trails, mountain bike trails and rope courses and a ninja course and then the active type of recreation is represented through athletic fields, an inclusive playground, concession and a restroom structure and then some additional shelters for gathering and also a splash pad. Next slide. So the concept that was developed here is one- So the concept that was developed here is one that we will be using for both of these parts, or both of the concepts, rather than a different theme for each, and that is this idea of peaks of preservation. And during our site visit and analysis, we observed these pockets of historic and environmental features, the farmstead structures, the pecan grove, the mature hardwoods, even some habitat that is suitable for some endangered species. And so if preserved and enhanced, this would reflect the site's history and character. So we really saw this as, when we mapped this and we did kind of a graph of this and where some of these areas of preservation landed on the site, and we found that there are peaks and troughs. And these peaks of preservation would be the areas that we would want to preserve, and the troughs would be the areas of the site that we would want to develop with these characteristics of active recreation throughout the site. Next slide. So the first concept, we are locating, the primary difference between these two is the location of the athletic fields and the event lawn. In this concept, we are locating multi-purpose athletic fields throughout the site, some towards the front, some in the center, and some towards the rear. We should also note that most of these athletic fields are designed and intended to be multi-purpose, and so they can be used for a variety of athletic applications depending on current trends, from soccer to lacrosse to football to baseball and softball. In this concept, the event lawn is located up towards East Garner Road, towards the primary access point. That is primarily because of the park's location and proximity to downtown and the potential for pedestrians and bikers to use alternative transportation to attend events after they are spending some time downtown, visiting restaurants or shopping. And so economic development has a lot of potential for the site in particular. There are a number of adventure areas in this site, primarily towards the eastern side of the site where there's some more topography, but also this would allow us to preserve some of the mature hardwoods while also using them for recreation as treetop trails and ropes courses. There are also some paved pedestrian trails, but intermingled with some natural surface trails. And then on the western side of the site is a mountain bike trails. We're intentionally separating mountain bike trails from the other types of trails on the site. Mountain bikers typically like that idea of separation. And then again, locating the athletic fields towards the rear of the site where we also have what we call a park within a park. So we want to develop a number of alternative recreation opportunities to athletics so, you know, any type of visitor or family member, brother and sister, can make use of the space while their sibling is using the fields or playing a game during peak times for athletic tournaments or practice. There is also a small rustic-type amphitheater on the site, as you can see in letter E up closer to the site. And in this concept, we've preserved the pecan grove, which is letter B, and the primary farmstead home A, and the second residence and the barn in C and D. So moving on to the next concept. This concept locates the fields closer to East Garner Road, putting most of the activity in what is currently open space. It also has less of a focus on baseball and softball and does not have the multi-purpose outfield as the previous concept. This concept also places the event lawn in a much larger event lawn, kind of nestled within the site in the hardwoods, and the play facilities and splash pad closer to the event lawn rather than the multi-use fields which are located up front. This concept does have similar locations for the adventure trail and the mountain bike trails, and those are intentionally located in one of those peaks of preservation near the mature hardwoods and existing streams on site. Moving on, so some precedent imagery for this concept to reflect the amphitheater and event lawn, hopefully again, serving a lot of the town annual events and any special events or guest performances from out of town that residents and visitors could use downtown and then walk over to the park. Some additional shelters for rentals and community gatherings, and then your more active athletic facilities, including baseball and the multipurpose fields. For those of you who might not be as familiar with some of these more adventure-type facilities, these are some images of ropes courses, zip lines, but also some treetop trails. And then, of course, the mountain bike trails, an inclusive play area and a splash pad. And we note from the output of the community engagement and statistically valid survey from the comprehensive plan that providing more all-inclusive facilities and a splash pad were some of the top-ranked desired amenities along with trails. So finally, we wanted to talk a little bit about the economic impact potential primarily of the Jürgen Park. We think that the historic value and some of the features, such as the cutting garden that Shweta mentioned on Meadowbrook, do have some economic development potential, but we primarily see this over at Jürgen where we have the potential for athletic tournaments and performances at the event lawn and amphitheater. We recently did a study for the city of High Point that worked with their tourism, their convention and visitors bureau, to not only review what the direct revenue was from sports, special events, their golf course and campgrounds, but what that translates into in terms of economic impact. And there is a multiplier that they use for this, and the outcome was a $5.6 million economic impact on the town's or the city's economy. So it is significant. And then I'm going to let Shweta talk about some other studies done by the Trust for Public Land.
Yeah, so Trust for Public Land did a study in 2009 talking about the economic impacts of park properties. And they mentioned the quantitative data related to this economic value. So they mentioned that property values increased by fifteen percent because of high-quality parks. Thirty-five percent of every tourism dollar spent is a profit for local economy. So tourism is a big aspect when we have high-quality parks in communities. Direct use, these are the savings that are achieved by replacing the private providers or working in conjunction with private providers. Health is another big important aspect of economic value because it drives the reduction in medical cost, up to $250 per year per capita. That's a big saving associated with value that parks bring in terms of providing those health and fitness, wellness activities in the parks. Community cohesion is another aspect that doesn't have a quantity percentage associated with that, but it's that social capital that communities start building when they have high-quality parks. People use these parks, communities enjoy being together, and they start taking ownership of these parks. And so we start seeing Friends of the Parks organizations, nonprofit organizations, a lot of volunteer groups that start taking care of parks, and that is then converted into the economic value of parks as well. Some of the environmental aspects that are mentioned in this study include clean water, which is mitigating the impact of stormwater, using this land to percolate that stormwater in this land, and then reducing that impact on the town's treatment plans by using the natural filtration. Clean air is another aspect that's mentioned in this study, which they bring, they have shown some multipliers that they have used for reducing the particulate matter in air and bringing some quantitative dollar amount by showing that how parks are contributing to saving by clean air and clean water, environmental services. And then we will talk a little bit about these. Rachel, you want to take this again?
Yeah, sure. I think this slide just touches on the goals from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that are related to funding sources. And these are the same funding sources that are listed in the comprehensive plan that are good for consideration in terms of how to fund either of these parks. No grant in and of itself will be able to fund the full magnitude of either park. So looking at a combination of funding sources or some larger funding sources like a general obligation bond are probably the route to go for these large-scale initial capital investments. And a couple things that we wanted to note about those on the next slide. If the town is considering a general obligation bond, one of the questions we asked in order to get a little bit of insight in terms of what residents are willing to contribute, sixty-three percent of residents are supportive of either a one to three percent increase in taxes for a hundred-dollar property valuation to improve and expand the Town of Garner's park system. So that's a pretty positive result in terms of what residents are willing to contribute. It would be interesting to see exactly what that number equates to, so we can start looking specifically at how much of either of these parks would be able to be funded through some sort of general obligation bond of that specific level of increase. And then some considerations before any funding requests are really made, especially a general obligation bond, are to be able to demonstrate citizen support for the improvements. A lot of communities go through some sort of marketing campaign that talks about exactly what the funding request or bond would be for and get citizen input and excitement generated. It also encouraged you to consider funding multiple projects to get a diverse citizen support. So both of these parks have a lot of different elements to them, and if we focus on just one, you might get the support of a special interest group such as athletics or aquatics, but you might not get the full diverse support of an entire community that would be needed to pass something like a bond. And then something that's incredibly important is accurate cost estimates to set a bond value and community expectations. We are currently working on executing construction drawings for bonds that were passed based on very high-level master plan concepts. And when time has passed, and we all know that construction values can fluctuate based to market conditions, oftentimes, and when you start digging into the detail, those that initial master plan cost estimates and scope that's promised to the residents isn't what they are able to afford once the construction drawings are actually prepared. So we recommend going a little bit further in terms of a thirty percent construction set to get some of that more detailed information documented to provide an extra level of detail before anticipating any costs, so you can set community expectations and also consider phasing options if necessary. Wanted to show this slide again and just emphasize that we are very early in the concept development process. We will still be presenting these to the general public for their feedback, and then we will be incorporating comments from all of the groups who provided feedback. So that would be the Park and Recreation Commissioners, the Town Council, and the general public. We still have yet to complete the pro forma for Jürgen Park, and we will be finalizing a written report before we come back and present the final master plan document for any remaining comments and eventual adoption. And with that, we would like to answer any questions you might have, and also want to encourage you all and the public to provide any additional feedback.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple quick comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to council. I find your presentation has some rather intriguing and interesting elements and concepts. I would say that, yeah, you presented some things possible in either one of these parks that we certainly do not currently have available in the current park system that we have. So I find those interesting and intriguing. And I'm sure I'll have a couple of other comments later on, but I'm going to turn it over to council. Counsel, I'm wondering, we can do it however you like, would you prefer, I mean, you can make your comments about the general presentation about either park, or would you like to say we'll concentrate first on Meadowbrook and then have comments and questions there, and then we'll go to the Jürgen Park? Do you have a preference one way or the other? Or you can make comments about either one? I don't know, that would be more confusing.
One park at a time makes sense, since we've seen both of them.
Yeah, I think if we sort of concentrate on one park at a time.
I agree, yeah.
Since Meadowbrook was the first one presented, why don't we start there? And I was gonna, I'll skip around a little bit, but make sure everybody certainly gets a chance to weigh in on this, ask questions and make comments. I'll start with Mayor Protem Behringer.
Well, this obviously represents quite a bit of work that was done, amazing amount of work. And I will be honest and say that the presentation was, for me, quite overwhelming. I think Rachel led off and said that it'd been quite some time since we met as council and with the architects, and I think October third was the date mentioned. A lot has happened in our world since then and taken our attention away. And so I am finding myself feeling, as I said, overwhelmed looking at the plans, a little bit in shock that we haven't had an interim report since October ninth or any opportunity for interim input. And I have questions about the historic designation issues at Meadowbrook. I know that there were some as far as being able to develop the development and the sports fields and so forth, but I feel like I don't have anywhere near the information I need to understand how we arrived at the conclusion that we have in the plan. So I'll stop with that and let someone else speak.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to go to Mr. Matthews over here, if he'd like to comment or ask questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Had a little difficulty understanding the lady speaking on the Meadowbrook. Sorry, it might be my old age or what have you, but I could not understand a whole lot, hadn't had this to go by. One quick question, this might go to staff. Since we purchased this from Saint Augustine's College, are our hands tied on anything that we cannot do in this property? I guess that's leaning more toward. Um, I guess that's leaning more toward historical perspective, because if we buy this for, for parkland, I want to see those things in a parkland that families are going to enjoy. I'm not, you know, way Garner's growing, people moving in, you know, the historical stuff, that's nice, maybe have a section for that, but they're looking for the amenities out there in the parklands, and, uh, so is there anything we cannot do out there?
Yes, uh, yeah, unless, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to turn that question for specifics over to the consultant, because they've had discussions with the, uh, state agency, State Historic Preservation Office, and with, um, some federal agencies that deal with water quality and wetlands and those type of things, so. Obviously bought the property to develop for athletic fields, uh, knew it was a historic property. Um, however, I think the thinking and some of the due diligence that was done, we, I think we figured or retold that the worst that could happen was we would lose the historic designation, but we would be able to do other things on this property. Um, and I think their conversations, they may have found out differently. Possibly hold up permits, nothing anybody was able to investigate at the time. So it appears to me that through their conversations that there are some limitations, so I'd rather the consultant answer that.
Rachel, could you, um, try?
We might have to look at that further.
Yes, I can.
I guess my question, you were, you're, I was alluding to there, so, so if I hear you correctly, we do have issues on kind of the historical, uh, things about this property that we don't have a clear answer on. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I'm not sure if it's, I think it's clear, but I would let the consultant answer it, and then we would have to decide.
This is Rachel, and I'm happy to answer that.
Yeah, let Rachel weigh in if she wants to. Can we see her on the screen? I don't know if it matters.
So, um, so I'm a little confused here, because this, I want to board time this was purchased, and maybe some, some of the folks here can clarify it was, but, uh, so initially purchased, we thought it, we could do what we wanted, then since then, after we purchased, we found out there are conditions now, or potential conditions, the things we can and cannot do. So I guess my question is, till all that's clarified, what we've had, look at here tonight on the Meadowbrook, uh, uh, we don't know if we can do any of this or not. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
I believe the consultant is going to clarify how binding those are.
Yeah, is, is, is Rachel the one from the consultant who is going to speak to this issue?
Yeah.
She was, wait, can, can you give us your response to the inquiries that have been made?
Yes, I certainly can. We've done a great deal of, of research on this topic. Uh, we always go through what we call the due diligence process at the beginning of every master planning project to understand any regulatory or environmental or physical constraints on the site. And we did a detailed review of cultural resources, which includes reaching out to SHPO or the State Historic Preservation Office to see what their records reflect, or if there are any historic, uh, or, uh, elements of historic value on site that they require further exploration. And we did find records that this is, uh, a site that is on the National Register, and it is not only the clubhouse that is on the National Register, but it is the entire parcel, which means that technically this parcel needs to remain in its current state in perpetuity. Now, there is a caveat to that, which is the State Historic Preservation Office only has jurisdiction over the site if we trigger federal permits. A federal permit is something like impacting a wetland or a stream. So our initial approach was, well, can we develop this if we don't impact any of those features? First of all, we found that site access is going to be incredibly challenging without a stream crossing, and it's pretty risky to assume that we want to impact that stream at all, but it is doable. And second of all, we felt that there is a responsibility for us to communicate with both the State Historic Preservation Office and the public that this does, this land does appear on the National Register, uh, and we are not intentionally, uh, trying to circumvent the process in order to clear cut the land and develop it. Um, we also cannot guarantee that that is a possibility, and so we felt that, uh, after having a specialist with, um, uh, she is a historian and has worked for the State Historic Preservation Office, she also did a review to help us navigate the process and determine what is the site's greatest potential, and it would be enhancing some of the historic features on site and having a close coordination and conversation with SHPO about what type of development could take place. So we feel what we've presented is the most development that that would be allowed, and it would still need close coordination and permitting through, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office.
Okay, I feel, if you, let me get to some of the council members in.
I'm going to circle back here, but. If I could, since I opened this counter worms here. Second item, I'm, again.
If you'll go quickly, I need to get some of your.
Okay, I'm looking more for things for families to do, more than historical side, but it, what I'm hearing is, we've got issues on this particular piece of property, and, uh, I've got big concerns about doing much with it at this point till we get a lot of things clarified up, and if we got our hands tied, that's a whole different ballgame. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go this way. I'll go to Mr. Dellinger.
Uh, first of all, thank you to the consultants for all their hard work on this. Um, I got my first look at this, I think, a month and a half ago, maybe even two months ago, um, sitting on the Parks and Rec, being the liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And when I first saw the presentations, given, uh, already being knowledgeable of the limitations that were presented in October, and then seeing how you operated within those constraints to create these two concepts, it, it, it's actually very mind-blowing and, and emotional for the efforts made to incorporate the historical elements. Uh, it's the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department, and I think identifying this land as a cultural resource, um, was definitely something that you all managed to do, given the historical significance, but also the incredible amount of restraints and constraints on the property. So I commend you on that work and your input from the community on that, that side of it as well. It's really, um, great work. My question, uh, is kind of more general on how have you determined the capacity of the use of these parks? And that kind of goes to looking that there doesn't seem to be a lot of parking in either of these concepts, and so my main question is, is there enough parking to utilize this park at its maximum usage, uh, in, in both of these concepts?
I believe that's a question that we wanted to see if the consultant, uh, Sonia, could answer, should answer.
Rachel, are you still with us? I am, yep, happy to. Um, and I can speak more to Jurgen, and I will let Schweda speak to, um, Meadowbrook. I will say that we make Adams work on a number of athletic facilities in North Carolina and have come up with a, a pretty comfortable standard related to, uh, peak times, and that would be either when you're hosting some sort of tournament or, uh, when practices are turning over. It's about, uh, thirty-five spaces per field, which is probably above and beyond what your local regulations are, so we have accounted for that. I think once we finalize the direction of the concept that we decide on, there will be a much more detailed level of confirming parking requirements and what we're providing. We're also hoping that a good amount of visitors will be walking from downtown, although that is a long-term goal, because there would be some pedestrian facilities that would need to be constructed and provided. And Schweda, if you could speak to Meadowbrook.
Yes, so I would, um, stress the same point again. I think once we have a concept that we are planning to focus on, we will be taking a greater look at these concepts, um, to figure out the parking capacity at the parks. Um, right now, what you're seeing, these plans are, um, a little bit higher level, and we are still looking at parking expansion at the clubhouse, the existing clubhouse building, and then the new property that's on the western side will have extra parking associated, uh, depending on the programming direction this property takes. So if we are planning for tennis courts and basketball courts, additional programming at that site, um, we will be looking, taking a closer look at the standards and making sure that we provide enough parking in those areas.
Yeah, I would, I definitely prioritize that because of two things. One, the, the constraints on the property. Um, the other is, in, with the other parks we have, particularly like Benson, there's a, a lot of parking, but then there's also a lot of extra parking along the entry road and things like that, so that when people decide to show up and, and utilize the facilities, um, there's ample parking. So just as you refine the concept, um, pay particular attention to sort of that peak capacity usage of the property and making sure that there's ample parking. That's my only.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go back around. Um, I'm going to sound petty for just a minute. Are, are we using team as our, uh, process here? I always like to see a face of somebody who's talking, but is it strictly just a telephone audio-type program that we're using tonight?
Depending on how they chose to log in, they may have video capabilities, I'm not sure.
Okay.
If they just logged in on phone, then they would not, but.
Okay. I'll, I'll try not to make that such a big issue, but, uh, that, that's one of the things I dislike about virtual, is if I can't see the other person, I'd just like to be able to see them and, uh, look into their eyes, and they can look into mine if they want to, but anyway.
Ask the consultants to take that into consideration as they speak, if they don't mind.
That would be nice, yeah, I think it would be. Okay, I'm going to go. Mr. Singleton, um, are you, you're, you're up.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the presentation, the work you've done so far. Uh, I want us to have a meeting with, with the consultants, as Ms. Behringer mentioned, it's been since October third, we're at ten months, and we hadn't seen anything, and I'm, I'm very disappointed in that, not being updated along the way. Even with COVID, we can get, you know, stuff sent to us electronically, so I want us to schedule a meeting with y'all as soon as possible, uh, like a work, uh, like a morning session here in our training room, so we can go over this. I have so many issues with these concepts that, uh, I wouldn't dare write them all down, I'd be here all night, so I'll cut that part to be brief, but I want to, us to go through this piece by piece, because, um, I just have a lot of issues. Mr. Dellinger, Dellinger mentioned a good point, because I kept looking for parking, kept thinking, where the heck's all the parking? And being someone who's an assistant coach for a soccer team, uh, now look at the activity fields and going to other places and seeing their parking, some of it's good and some of it's not so good, that, that's a concern. Uh, the lack of other, some other facilities, our lack of some concerns. Really, Jurgen, I mean, we mentioned the need for ball fields, and concept two at Jurgen is just, we don't even need to look at that. We, we need six multipurpose fields and a couple more baseball slash softball fields. I know what it is with the multipurpose fields, playing, going to other, uh, areas of Wake County, and the lack that we have here. We have a lot of baseball and softball fields currently in town and other ones that aren't even, uh, that the town operates that are here, so, uh, we have one really good multipurpose field in town, and that's it, especially for older kids and, and youth and teenagers. Uh, Centennial Park is basically geared towards small kids, and so, uh, I, I just, I want us to schedule a meeting, uh, because I could be here all night without concerns. I have some of the concerns Mr. Matthews does, want to get in some more detail about, uh, basic elements that I think should be in a park. I don't think there are enough basic, basic elements in, in, in either one of these parks, uh, that I think people will expect. The people who live down in this area, who don't want to drive all the way to Lake Benson or White Deer or South Goner or whatever, they're going to expect some more of these, uh, those elements in these parks, and, uh, we need to talk about that with you one-on-one, not here in a, in a virtual meeting. So I, I want our staff, I've already told them this, I emailed them this, that, uh, I want us to set up a meeting with y'all as soon as possible, so we can work on these concepts, and if it takes two, three, four meetings, whatever it takes to flesh this stuff out, because I have so many issues with the concept presented, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch it, I, I just have so many issues with the concepts, I really do, um, on both, both parks. It's some good things in them and some not so good things, so that's where I'll, I'll leave that right there.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Mr. Vance is next up.
Uh, yes, I would say similarly to the timeframe in which we've been absent from this particular process of October third is, uh, is a decent length of time, and as it already has been said, I will not repeat, uh, there was a lot of things that happened since then with, can, can you hear me now? There are a lot of things that happened since then with COVID and a number of other things, and it's, I believe it's imperative that we flush out a number of things, and particularly when it comes to the Jurgen, not the Jurgen, but with the Meadowbrook piece, when it comes to understanding of what transpired with the due diligence and, uh, the National, the National Register of Historical Places and how that changed, uh, possible, the thought processes because of the limitations, uh, that were incurred. We were thinking initially, if I'm not mistaken, that it was going to be, uh, a building or a, the clubhouse initially was a historical place, and then became the whole property, uh, which restricts what can be placed there based upon, uh, the rules and regulations that are stipulated by the Historical Place of, Historical Preservation Office. Uh, and, and because of the length of time and, and the amount of information that was given, good briefing, but it was a lot of information, and if it was, if it was sectioned out or broken out over a period of time, then it'd probably be more absorbable and understanding, uh, what can and can be, not be done on the Jurgen property. I know that when we met also, we were talking about there was rock out there on, correction, I'm saying Jurgen, I meant Meadowbrook. There were rock out there on the Meadowbrook property, which would limit some of the, uh, type of activities that we could do out there, and thus we turned, turned the focus over to the Jurgen property. So those type things, I believe, would bring back up and look at and see why we did certain things, and then also bring into a better understanding of the historical preservation please, um, and, and just iron out a few more things before we go forward. Uh, I think that, from, from my point of view, would be the, uh, a, a, a more logical way to go. So I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, meeting with the consultants and, and just having a more detailed meeting, so that a better understanding can be had of what transpired over the, what, ten months, and, uh, and, and the thought process and, and what went into the whole process. That's where I am.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd move your mic.
Is it on?
Oh, yeah. I, I guess it's on now, yeah, I thought at first it was not.
Is my mic on?
Is it? I think so, yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Vance.
Hear me okay? I can repeat everything over again.
Okay. Uh, I, I'm going to circle back around to where we started, and I'll come back to Ms. Behringer, if she has some follow-up.
Well, the only, the only thing I'll add at this point, I, I understand what everybody has said, and I do believe we need more time and more conversation, many more conversations with the consultants, so that we can get our vision and our restrictions or our, um, our opportunities in line with the property we had. If my memory serves me correctly, when we purchased Meadowbrook, our thoughts were ball fields, ball fields, ball fields, and now we're finding out after the fact that that is in fact not going to be able to happen. That's, that's disappointing. We already own the property now, so we are going to have to find a way to use it and then shift that ball field focus elsewhere, but we need to iron those facts out so that we have a clear path going forward, and we all understand, we're all on the same page and understand what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. And Mr. Matthews, I'm back to you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just two things, I agree with, uh, Mr. Singleton, we need to have that one-on-one meeting and not virtual, in-person, that way we can, everybody can see each other and understand each other. I think that will be most important, and, uh, so that would be the first thing we need to do. Secondly, let's get a hundred percent clarification on the Meadowbrook, what we can and we can't do, so we know, know what we've got to deal with. And, uh, so that's my two items, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. And I'm back to Mr. Dellinger.
Since it looks like we're gonna have a meeting, I'll save all my comments for that meeting.
That's where we're headed, it appears, yeah. Okay, yeah. Mr. Singleton, do you have anything?
No, I'll say on Jürgen, I mean, I talked to the property owner about this eight, nine, 10 years ago and said, hey, when you get ready to sell that property, please contact us. So this is, I take a lot of pride in both of these parks, but this one in particular. So I have a lot of interest here. When I mention basic elements, that, that maybe I'm missing them here. You know, I know that shelters is mentioned, shelters are a source of revenue for the town, and we need more, and I can only find one on either park, and that's extremely disappointing unless they're in here hidden. I've looked through here trying to find them, and there may be multiple ones in here, hidden in here, but I have a hard time finding them because some of the designations of what things are. We built a park like this, and we're spending all these millions of dollars. To me, that's a basic element that people expect where they can come. I think one of the great things mentioned in here, when you talk to some of the folks with Meadowbrook, is you talk to some of the former members, and I'll get it up here. I've read this numerous times, when they talk about, the gentleman talks about the hot dog stand, great place to socialize. Well, people like to socialize at shelters, whether it's whoever rents it, a civic group, a church group, the town council, whoever, baseball teams, soccer teams, whoever may use it. And to lack of shelters, I would be, I'm extremely disappointed. We put all this money for this land, and that's the only thing I see is one. That's disappointing. The gentleman mentioned about the hot dog stand, people sit around and talk, it was a social place. That's what people do when they eat, they socialize. And we need to have more. And again, there may be some in here hidden, there's some little things that I can't tell if that's what they are or not, but I think we should have multiple ones at each park. And also, you know, the focus on parks should be on kids and families having fun, the athletic ones, whether they're young kids or older kids, but I think that's where the focus should be. I don't see a lot of that in Meadowbrook. I see some of it, but I don't see a lot. I see some of it here in Jürgen, but again, I have concerns with both parks, and I want us to have a meeting so I can really get specific with questions. So I'll be like Mr. Dellinger, and I'll be, I'll conclude my remarks and hope we schedule a meeting with y'all soon.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. So I believe I'm back to Mr. Vance, if he has some other items.
I do not have any further comments. I do not have any further.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll go one more round, if anybody else, questions, comments? Okay, none for you here? Okay?
We may need to go down to the Lake Benson Boathouse and get a kayak.
Sounds like it, yeah.
Gosh.
Mr. Matthews, anything else?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good.
I'll save mine like Mr. Dellinger, we'll have a lot to talk about when I get here.
I would say that I think we need to have a conversation.
There's a new thing we're trying to do with our parks, and if you look at the parks that we have that people love, they actually don't have that many amenities. They do have shelters, they do have trails, but there aren't that many things to do. And so we're trying to do something a little different. And I think incorporating what you're talking about, Mr. Singleton, the activities is a kind of a new concept for the parks that we're, we're trying to create for what we have. So I think we do need to have a lot of conversation about what's in it.
Sure. Just a couple of comments that the mayor's gonna, gonna make. I, I assume we're all influenced some by other parks that we've visited and seen different elements in. I'm influenced some when I travel out to Colorado to see my grandchildren and see some of the parks out there. And some of the things that, yeah, are creative out there that we don't have here, because I'm not suggesting we copy everything we see some other place, but I think there's one other thing that looms somewhere out there, not sure how much you incorporated, but in many ways, I see these two parks as, shall I say, parks for a future generation. That's not to suggest that they shouldn't have elements in it that interest the current generation, but these parks, once they are designed and put together and open, they're gonna outlive many of us. I'm sure they'll outlive me, maybe some of your younger guys not, but they are in many ways being built for another generation. And so while we can't always envision what those generations want, I think there is a changing dynamic that we have to be conscious of, and so, you know, some of the things that our kids enjoyed may not be some of the same things that future generations of kids prefer to see. So as much as we can keep that element in there, I think we should remember that. Okay, let me see, I was back to, yeah.
I wanted to recognize somebody with Shearer, that's Helen Carter out there, and she's part of a group, families that work very hard on recreational needs for special needs kids. And they, I've met with them on a couple of occasions, and they have done their due diligence as far as equipment, as well as they've got a lot of ideas on how to come up with money on, to help pay for these things also. They, and so I just wanted to make sure the folks working on this know that that is a very important issue for the special needs kids, and we want to make that a priority. And we have folks that here is willing to provide them what they need and the tools they need, as well as assist them with their time and efforts. So I just wanted to recognize Helen, thank her for being here, and, and we'll just see where that goes.
Thank you, Phil. Yeah, the family that I've been working with, I really couldn't be.
Excuse me, just for a minute. We like to kind of get everybody who speaks, since we're recording this. If you, if you don't mind going there, just, just give us your name one more time and address.
My name is Helen Carter, and I live on Wit Horn Drive in the Heather Ridge subdivision.
Okay.
Property backs up to the Y. And, but I represent a family that has some special needs children, and they're very interested in this, and that, they brought it up to begin with. I like a lot of the stuff that's in the Jürgen plan, but I see some of the areas, I'm concerned about pavements, now the trails are good, but when you have a wheelchair, you need caved, paved access as well. And one of the plans didn't, didn't have a paved access around that walking trail. And access to the amphitheater didn't look like it was wheelchair accessible, so from the pictures that were in the diagrams. So I'd like to stay involved, we'd all like to stay involved so that we can make sure that it's gonna fit the needs of special needs children and adults.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight. At this point, and I'm not eliminating any other comments from council, but I was gonna ask town staff maybe to respond to the expressed desire, I believe, of this council to have an opportunity to meet in person with a consultant. And of course, if the consultant wants to respond to anything that's been heard so far, we give them an opportunity to. But Mr. Dixon, I'll let you speak at this point, if you will.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would say, yeah, we definitely are, you know, minimal to having a sit-down where we can flesh through this a little bit more. A lot of work going on since October, a lot of groups to get information from, and I'd be remiss to say there's, there's also groups out there that would like to see it developed as a golf course, stay a golf course. So a lot of ideas, a lot of thoughts around what could happen with this property. We certainly did not realize it was gonna be as restricted as it was. Even our purchase agreement, you know, talks about us not having, not being any regulations or restrictions to having it as a public park. Didn't really specify exactly what type of park. I can go to the mic if you want me to. It also had other provisions and conditions that talked about the historic designation not preventing the removal of the structure. So, you know, legal had tried to, I think, put some protections in there that I guess the seller, you know, agreed would be valid, so I don't know what happened with that, but I think once the agencies got involved, you know, that have control over some of these things, we found out that it was more restrictive. And I'm not sure if there's ways around it, or if we need to explore any other options or anything, but I think we can take a look at what we have here on paper in more detail and see if there's ways to tweak it that will meet everybody's interest. And with that, I'll see if, wanna see if Dr. Shaw has anything.
Yes.
From a staff perspective?
Dr. Shaw, I'm, will recognize you at this point for any comments you want to make based on what you've heard thus far and the direction we're moving in at this point.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much for the feedback and comments. And let me see if I can get my video to work here.
There you go, we can see you.
Okay, here we go, here we go. So I would just say thank you all so much for taking time to review the conceptual plans. As we mentioned, we're still early on in the process. There has been truly a lot that's taken place since October of last year, but I do believe that we can certainly catch up and get these plans where you all will certainly be pleased with them with a meeting where we can flesh out the details and really get an opportunity to talk through possibilities of each site. So that's exciting news that you all are interested in having those meetings, and we can certainly work with administration to make sure we get something set up for you at your convenience.
Okay, and I don't want to try to pin anything down specific, but I'm wondering if you or the town manager would speculate on when, when, how soon, or what timeframe we might be able to take this next step and have this meeting with the consultants and yourself?
So what I can do is send some, get with our consultants, see what early dates they have available, and, as well as council members, and work through Stella to, to make that happen. So we can get that coordinated as quickly as both parties are available.
Okay, thank you very much. Council members, questions or comments for Michelle? Ms. Behringer?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Singleton, Mr. Yeah, okay, none. Mr. Vance? Okay, unless, Ms. Doc Shaw, there's further information from you or the consultant, I'm gonna move this towards a closeout of this particular segment of our agenda, and we'll move to the next element there. You have any closing comments?
None at all, just want to thank McAdams for their work. They've certainly been alongside us pushing plans forward, and we'll regroup with them and set up a meeting that works for all parties and get us back on the right page, if that works for you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Just, I guess my closing comment would be, I appreciate the council's concerns and insights. I think they've addressed any number of concerns and issues. I, of course, like to take a position that, of course, I was on the council when we voted to purchase this property, think it's a great piece of property, and notwithstanding some of the things we're finding out now regarding limitations, I certainly think there are ways to, to work around that and still make this property a, a, a big part and a proud part of our town park system, even with the constraints that we're hearing about now. So we're fortunate, I think, to have another piece of property, the Jürgen property, which also has great potential, and we've seen any number of those tonight. So between the two, I hope and believe they will be, we can turn them into something that would be great additions to our park system and give you even more work to do, Dr. Shaw.
That's all right, we'll take it, we'll take it.
Sure, thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you all. With that, I'm going to basically, let's see, what time, does anybody need to take a break?
Not yet.
Okay, okay. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is item number two, and I believe, Ms. Gabby, Lanto Scholaller, you're leading there, and we have some people virtually joining. Well, no, there's Mr. Het, he's not joining us virtually, he's here in person. Good to see you, sir.
We do have Jeff on virtually.
Okay, good.
Mr. Treisenberg, ladies and gentlemen.
He's in person while he's pulling his pants up.
Mr. Stallings and Mr. Treisenberg are joining us virtually. Thank you, okay. You're, you're up, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the town council. So we are here with you this evening to discuss the Wake BRT, Southern Corridor, and the locally preferred alternative selection. And here with me from the city of Raleigh are Het Patel and David Eetman. So Het is going to give you an overview of work done to date, which will include an overview of public engagement efforts, the different routing alternatives, as well as trade-offs to consider between these different alternatives meant to help facilitate the discussion of the locally preferred alternative, or LPA. And then after Het goes through that, I will take over and wrap up with some considerations from the Town of Garner's perspective. So without further ado, here is Het.
Thank you. And welcome back to the Town of Garner, Mr. Het.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good to be back in front of you. As Gabby mentioned, Het Patel, Senior Transit Planner for City of Raleigh. I will walk you guys through some background and summary on what we presented to you back in February for introducing the Southern Corridor and kicking off the public engagement events. I will provide some summary from that public engagement events, and then do a little bit more of a deeper dive into the locally preferred alternative considerations, more specifically for the southern portion, which comes into Town of Garner jurisdiction, what we have as trade-offs within those alternatives, and some recommendations, some technical recommendations that have been identified up until now, and then turn it back over to Gabby to talk about some capital investment program considerations for the town. So we always like to start this discussion whenever we're talking about wait transit plan or bus rapid transit, with the wait transit plan that happened in 2016 that identified the four big moves. You've probably heard of them by now, and bus rapid transit falls in big move number three, which is providing frequent, reliable urban transit. And this presentation focuses specifically on the Southern Corridor, but the wait transit plan identified four corridors, and so there's three others. I also presented this slide back in February to give council an idea of how the local and federal processes interplay with each other, what, as it relates to the bus rapid transit projects for wait transit. So the first bubble you see is route selection. That's currently where we are with the Southern Corridor and the Western Corridor. Town of Cary council actually endorsed the locally preferred alternative for the Western Corridor within Town of Cary jurisdiction just last week. So that will be going to City of Raleigh council in August for their consideration. So Southern Corridor is just in the same place we're working right now to have the discussion about the locally preferred alternative. And once we get to a point where we're comfortable enough to actually make an endorsement on a locally preferred alternative, that will go back to City of Raleigh council. And then when you see the orange points that are highlighted in, in this slide, it's basically when we have to coordinate with the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, because the wait transit plan identified 50%, at least a 50% matching formula for implementing bus rapid transit. And so there are certain points in this process where we have to reach out to FTA and coordinate within the small starts process that bus rapid transit falls under and apply, you know, submit letters for initiating that process, get accepted into the process, and then have the project rated. So you'll see, once you get to a PD application and that's accepted, and you go into 0% to 30% design and start designing bus rapid transit for that corridor, you will have additional opportunities where local decisions are factored in again, so where you can decide, you know, which, where the bus lanes would go, if they're going in the median, if they're going along the curb, looking at some station locations at that point. And some of those things will get figured out before we actually get to the next federal step in the process, which is a small starts rating application. And just kind of highlighting where New Bern Avenue is, that's the first BRT corridor that we had in the process. It has gotten the small starts ratings, which it received a medium-high rating, which was the next hurdle, and now basically we are moving into final design on New Bern Avenue. And when we get to a certain point in final design on New Bern Avenue is when we would, again, coordinate with the FTA to try to get to a small starts grant agreement. So that piece is the final piece of funding puzzle where you would get a full funding grant agreement from the FTA that says you can go ahead with construction on this project. So that just, at a high level, gave you an overview of what the federal and local process looks like for the bus rapid transit implementation, the BRT projects. Looking more specifically at just the route selection for the Southern Corridor, again, we presented this back to you in February. Some of the timing has changed a little bit due to COVID considerations. However, we have done the previous planning work efforts, reviewed all of that work, had our public meeting kickoffs in February 24th and March 3rd, right before COVID really became a challenge from public engagement perspective. So we had our kickoff meetings right before, we got some good feedback, and I'll get to that in a little bit. But we are here in the summer now. But we are here in the summer now, looking, going through some of the technical recommendations, and in the fall, we expect to submit a letter to the FTA for project development, initiating the project development, and then having our LPA selected sometime later this fall as well. So again, we presented this back in February, there are six alternatives for the Southern Corridor, three alternatives coming out of downtown Raleigh. Let me see if I can do this right. Yeah, okay, so three alternatives coming out of downtown Raleigh, up to the South Saunders, South Wilmington merge, and then two potential options going south of that, coming into Garner, all together combining into six different alternatives. But today, I really wanted to focus on overall what we know about the Southern Corridor, and then, again, do a little bit more deeper dive on the southern section that comes into Garner. So what we know, we know that the terminus for the Southern Corridor is downtown Raleigh, Go Raleigh Station, and then Purser Drive through Garner Station Boulevard in Garner. So, again, some of these alternatives, we have a dashed line on Garner Station Boulevard just coming off of three alternatives, but once we get into 0% to 30% design, once you have a locally preferred alternative, regardless of which alternative gets chosen, you can have Garner Station Boulevard as the preferred route through Garner, if that's what the town desires, because there are potential development opportunities and the existing station is on Garner Station Boulevard. So there are considerations there. And overall, from all the alignment considerations, we wanted to highlight that if needed, the Town of Garner and Town of, or Town of Garner and City of Raleigh can make independent decisions, which can still lead to a connected one alignment for the locally preferred alternative. So the example of that could be if the City of Raleigh determines South Wilmington Street and Wilmington Street Extension as their locally preferred alternative, and the Town of Garner identifies Fayetteville Road, you could have an alignment that does this, gets on Tryon, comes around to Fayetteville, does the Garner Station Boulevard loop. Vice versa, if you have Town of Garner that selects the Wilmington Extension and Garner Station Boulevard as its locally preferred alternative, and City of Raleigh wants to consider Fayetteville Road, you could have that turn into Tryon and complete that alignment. So we just wanted to highlight that there are ways for both jurisdictions to still make independent decisions, and we can combine them later, but if they both align together, that works as well. And the last bullet I have on the alignment considerations, really from what we know, is for the Wilmington Street Extension, which is a construction of a new roadway right here, the one thing that we do still need to further investigate are right-of-way opportunities, specifically opportunities with private development and dedication of right-of-way as private development's occurring. So there are some thoughts there that could potentially help lower the right-of-way impacts for that extension. So focusing on the southern portion, we have two alignment alternatives, Fayetteville Road or Wilmington Street Extension, which would be the new roadway construction, but there are three potential alignment scenarios. So Fayetteville Road, but within the new construction, you have an option of doing transit-only lanes or transit-only lanes with general-purpose lanes. So the distinguishing there is transit-only lanes would be just for the buses, it would provide transit access to those properties adjacent, but it would not provide any local vehicular access to properties along that extension. If you were to have a general-purpose lane along with the transit-only lanes, you would provide some service or local access to those properties. So the technical work that's been completed to date on the Southern Corridor is, we've done the public engagement, and I'll present some summary numbers to you in just a second. We've looked more closely at the South Wilmington Street Extension, because that's the new roadway construction. We've looked at constructability considerations, funding considerations, schedule implications for if that's selected as a LPA. And also, we've looked at further right-of-way to identify the difference between transit-only lanes and general-purpose lanes. There is not a significant difference with the right-of-way that's needed for transit-only lanes and bike-ped infrastructure to then also include some general-purpose lanes. So the right-of-way numbers don't significantly change there. And then we have an Alternatives Analysis Memo that's looked at some of the previous planning efforts along the corridor, the public feedback, and provided some technical recommendations out of that. So the kickoff meetings that we had end of February, beginning of March, together, between the two meetings, we had about 70 participants, 217 online survey responses, about 140 comments, and 36 members subscribing to receive more regular updates after that engagement period it ended. The one thing I do want to highlight about that engagement effort is that, if you look at the pie chart on the right, more than 50% of the respondents either live and work, work or live along the corridor. So a lot of the feedback that we received was from people that are on the corridor, which is a good, which is a good sign. One of the questions that we had asked was, you know, from a station location perspective, are we getting to the right stations along the Southern Corridor or right destinations? And so one of the highest destinations on the corridor that people are trying to get to is Go Raleigh Station in downtown. The second highest is Garner Station Boulevard, so that is a key destination along the corridor. South Street and Western Boulevard was the third highest destination, and that would be served through the western Bus Rapid Transit corridor. So that's kind of good to see there as well. And then the next couple are Purser Drive, Lenore Street, and some additional comments that aren't necessarily applicable to Bus Rapid Transit, but for Town of Garner consideration, White Oak Shopping Center, Jones Sausage Road. The town is currently also completing a Garner Transit Study, which would tie in these additional destinations to the Bus Rapid Transit corridor. At the same time, we also asked the public about features and priorities as it relates to Bus Rapid Transit. And so we just wanted to highlight some of the high priorities that were identified by the public. With over 100 votes or numbers, we had bike-ped connections and economic development opportunities as the highest two. And then the next highest at about 95 was the potential ridership for the corridor. Some of the low priorities that were identified include amount of right-of-way required, total cost to construct BRT, and average daily vehicular traffic. And we understand some of the low priorities are technical in nature, and so with the Wake Transit Plan, we are working with a financially constrained model, so the total cost to construct, you know, amount of right-of-way required, those do still factor into our decision-making, but we just wanted to highlight that from a public feedback perspective, some of the higher priorities were bike-ped connections and economic development opportunities. So looking at what we have for the trade-offs between these scenarios, Fayetteville Road, US 401, would provide, would require less right-of-way, would have no structural impacts. There would be some slivers of right-of-way impacts for where the BRT stations might go or a turning lane might go. So there's some very small sliver impacts, but no structural impacts. It would be lower costs and would have a shorter implementation timeframe. However, the last bullet on that trade-off is a pretty big one, that bicycle pedestrian safety concern along the corridor is pretty key. I mean, there has been some fatalities in that area along the corridor. And the transit user experience when you're trying to have users cross Fayetteville to access transit, there's some concerns there as well. From the South Wilmington Street Extension considerations, both under the transit-only or the general-purpose scenario, we're going to, that option requires more right-of-way, and it is likely to include structural impacts. We can do things to move the alignment slightly to minimize those impacts, but that would happen as we go into 0% to 30% design, but we can still identify that there will be some structural impacts. It would provide more bicycle pedestrian connections because it's a new roadway facility that, or new facility that we're constructing that could include some multimodal facilities, bike-ped accommodations. It would provide more development opportunities along the corridor. And public feedback, as I mentioned, the high priorities in the previous slide and the recommendations from previous planning efforts, that includes the Southern Gateway Corridor Study that City of Raleigh completed, and the Town of Garner's comprehensive plan and transportation plan, both are more aligned with the South Wilmington Street Extension. So bringing it all together, and this is going to be my last slide before I hand it off to Gabby, is that from the route selection considerations perspective, Wilmington Extension is recommended for greater economic development opportunities, better bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure connections, and providing a parallel facility to Wilmington Street, which is lower vehicular speeds and lower traffic, providing some, you know, local access to those parcels and providing more development opportunities. The note to consider with that option is that we would need to consider a local cost-sharing framework, and that's where Gabby's CIP discussion sort of comes into play, as well as looking at some right-of-way dedication through private development as potential funding sources before we get to a federal ratings application if that LPA is selected. If Fayetteville Road is recommended, or sorry, Fayetteville Road is recommended for a shorter implementation timeframe, and it requires, again, less right-of-way and lower construction costs, but the note here is that it is less aligned with some of the priorities received during public feedback and the previous planning efforts that have been completed for the corridor. So I'm going to hand it off to Gabby, and then I'll just be here to answer questions at the very end.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Het. So at this point, you've heard an overview of the alternatives for the Southern Corridor and the trade-offs with the different alternatives, as well as the criteria that can be used to help get to a selection of a locally preferred alternative. So now I'm just going to go through some of the considerations that we would have to keep in mind for Garner's Capital Improvement Plan and just from Town of Garner's perspective in general. So as Het mentioned, there's three alternatives for the southern section of the Southern Corridor. There's Fayetteville Road, which would have the lower cost and quicker implementation timeline, so that's, that's the benefit there. And then you have the two alternatives for the Wilmington Extension, and the benefit there is that there is greater economic development opportunities and more comfortable bicycle and pedestrian environment, but it comes at a higher cost. One thing to keep in mind is that all three of these alternatives would tie the Town of Garner into the regional transit system, and they would all still connect to Garner Station Boulevard, so that is one important thing to keep in mind. So for cost considerations, if either of the Wilmington Extension alternatives were selected, there would be a need for local funding in addition to FTA and Wake Transit funds. So what that means is that the town would likely need to consider allocating funds towards helping construct the Wilmington Extension through its CIP. I also wanted to highlight that there would be several other options for local funding sources that could help to offset that cost to the town. So there is the potential for cost-share agreements with landowners, and the town staff has been, has had conversations with property owners in the area of the Wilmington Extension. And at this point, there haven't been any formal commitments that have been made, but based on the conversation, staff believes that there are opportunities to establish cost-share agreements, and that's something that is going to continue to be explored. Additionally, another, another thing that would help, so right-of-way dedication by private property owners. So the Wilmington Extension was identified, as Het mentioned, both in City of Raleigh and Town of Garner long-term plans. And so as new development comes in, the town can require developers to dedicate right-of-way for the portion of the Wilmington Extension that borders their property. So that's another thing that can help to offset that cost and lower the amount of right-of-way that the town would have to acquire on its own. Another opportunity to seek funding would be through Capital Area MPO's LAP program, and there isn't a guarantee to secure funding through this, and as many of you might be aware, the LAP program is highly competitive, but nonetheless, it's, it's not entirely unrealistic. It's not an entirely unrealistic option. But all this is just to say that there are several other funding avenues that can still be explored that would help to, if we were to decide to proceed with the Wilmington Extension. And before I wrap it up, John, was there anything that you wanted to add about the CIP?
I think there's a couple of, a couple of challenges with timing. As Gabby said, there are some opportunities for developer donation or dedication of right-of-way, but from Tryon Road into north-south Garner Station Boulevard, there are only two property owners that would be impacted, but there are significant impacts. And I think the challenge is, I think it's very early for either of those property owners, much less both of them, to be willing or able to make any type of commitment to right-of-way by the time that we may need to select, or council may need to select your alternative later this fall. We are talking with them, but we really don't know that we would be able to get any type of right-of-way guarantee and dedicated for that, that alternative. So that's one challenge we've got, that's a timing consideration. And then there's also, while the Wilmington Extension does fit both Raleigh and Garner's longer-range plans, we had for the area that are, one thing that has come up, and Het can, can add to this or correct anything I say about this, is that DOT in reviewing the plans has indicated that crossing over Tryon, where Raleigh and Garner's plans had both indicated a corridor would go, they are not willing at this time to say that that could be an at-grade intercept, full movement intersection. And so if that has to be a flyover intersection, then that is going to add substantial cost to the overall project for both Raleigh and Garner. Did Het, anything you want to add to that or correct anything that I've missed?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add to that is, we have had those discussions with NC DOT, and one of the things that we have considered or have had internal discussions about is, if we're treating the Wilmington Street Extension, especially with the general purpose lanes, as a local access to those, to those properties, we could have an opportunity where we don't cross Tryon Road with general-purpose lanes, but only transit lanes, and have more of a service-access general-purpose lanes on the either side of Tryon. So that's something we still would have to communicate with NC DOT about and see if a limited-phase signal for just transit, which is, you know, working only so many times because buses only running 15, 10 or 15 minutes an hour, and having right-in, right-out access for general-purpose lanes at that intersection, would that limit the costs of potentially considering a flyover at that location?
And again, one unique challenge on Garner's side of Tryon Road is the area that Het will be talking about coming across with a bus-only lane would have to traverse through one very long property, and that property has to have another point of access to be developed in the future. So the only way I would really see that being able to happen is if the town purchased that entire tract of property and did it primarily for a bus-only lane, which I think would be fairly cost prohibitive, and take a really good piece of property off of the market for economic development opportunities. So again, it's, it's more challenging, all these scenarios get very challenging when you get to and cross Tryon Road. But having said that, we're drawing the alternative now as being Wilmington. Het did point out, though, that if Raleigh chooses Wilmington Extension to Tryon, there would be an option for us to come out on to Tryon and either come around to Fayetteville Road, as Het's indicating on the slide there. There's also a potential, it's not been fully studied, but there's a potential of coming out on Tryon and taking a right, so Wilmington Extension to the right, and then you have a loop with Junction Boulevard that comes around and also serves some other existing and future potential developments. So if Garner doesn't make the choice to choose the Wilmington Extension and Raleigh does, we do have some other alternatives, we think. And as was mentioned before, either way, this gets us Bus Rapid Transit Service to the area that we've always envisioned. the area that we've always envisioned and where we think we will have some fairly significant redevelopment opportunities, no matter which route is chosen.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to, just to wrap up, so as Het stated, the goal is to decide on an LPA this fall, but that being said, it would be possible to enter into project development, and there is some flexibility in terms of being able to, after entering into project development, submit a schedule for, or like a timeline for when the exact LPA would be selected if it was decided that more time was needed to have that conversation about the Southern section. So, there's a little bit of flexibility, not a lot, but just if it was decided that a little more time was needed to explore how that Southern portion, if the Wilmington Extension was being considered. So, City of Raleigh staff is planning to present to its Town Council in mid-September, and they'll be having a similar conversation that we had with Garner's Town Council this evening. And so, it's possible that at that point, they'll make a decision on the Northern Section LPA, or sorry, on the, for the Northern Section. And they might possibly express what their thoughts are on the Southern Section, but as John and Het both mentioned, if for some reason City of Raleigh decided to, that they preferred the Wilmington Extension and we decided that that was not feasible, there's still ways that that can work. And so, we'll, tonight, this is just for discussion, and we just wanted to lay out all the options for Town Council to be able to consider, and we will be bringing this item back. And if at that point it's still decided that more time is needed to arrive at a decision, then that's, that's fine. But we want to allow you all the proper amount of time and to have the sink in, and if you have any questions for us now, we've presented you with a lot of information, so I'll open it up for questions now.
I have just one very quick, sort of a broad, what I call a broad stroke question. What role does Campo play in this? Have they already, well, are they the one that provide or determine the LAP funding?
So, the role that the Capital Area MPO plays in this as the regional metropolitan transportation planning organization is they maintain the metropolitan transportation plan, the long-range plan, and the Federal Transit Administration, the locally preferred alternative has to be identified within the Campo's long-range MTP. So, once both the municipalities have endorsed, that's why we're saying it's an endorsement, not a recommendation, is because once the two municipalities endorse a locally preferred alternative, the Capital Area MPO through their TCC and the Executive Board actually amends the long-range 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan to include the BRT Southern Corridor LPA, and that's what we show as documentation to the Federal Transit Administration that this project now has a locally preferred alternative.
Okay, okay. And there are some timeframes that have to be met to keep this on track, right?
So, the timeframes that have to be met to keep this on track are more for us to work through the federal process, and as Gabby alluded to, we have gotten Raleigh Council recommendation or approval to go ahead and submit the project development application for the Southern Corridor, and we can do that with all six alternatives still on the board and explain to them that, you know, September 15th, we'll be presenting to Raleigh Council. Later in September, we'll come back to Garner Council. Basically, if we lay out a timeframe for when we think the LPA will be identified, we can go ahead and initiate project development. But that is a key component of project development, so the Federal Transit Administration likes to see that the plan is in place. So, a lot of times, we actually wait until the locally preferred alternative is selected, and at that point, it's easier to submit into project development.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to council now, Ms. Singeland.
Mayor, just, excuse me, one thing specifically followed with you, though, you did ask about LAP funding. So, Het gave you the answer as to how Campo was involved overall in the Wake Transit Plan and particularly the BRT Plan. Gabby mentioned the possibility of applying for LAP funding, but that would be, that would be an indirect way that we might choose to ask Campo to be involved with this on our behalf. It is not how they would normally be involved in this project. That would just be if we decided we wanted to build a road from Tryon to Garner Station Boulevard, and we submitted our own LAP application, and there's, there's lots of competition for that, as Gabby said, and then lots of risk on Garner's part probably for acquiring the right-of-way long before we ever submitted that. So, we did introduce that LAP question that probably came in your mind, but I just wanted to clarify that that is, that's not the traditional way that Campo would be involved in this overall project.
I just, now, I plan to continue attending those Campo meetings and trying to learn as much as I can about those kinds of things and how I can benefit certainly the Town of Garner. Okay, we'll go through a line of questions, comments, Ms. Singeland. I'll start with you, sir. Anything?
One question, mention, oh, we talked about issues with Fayetteville Road and some of the concerns. We talked about issues with pedestrians, we've had pedestrian issues on 401 recently. So, in looking at the last screen you have up here, that's basically if you did Fayetteville Road, the last picture where you had, thank you, is that, is that how it would work? Is that, that's what we proposed, if you did Fayetteville Road, you'd come down the middle and pedestrians would have to exit off one side or the other? Is that what we're, we're talking about with that? I mean, I'm just trying to, the concern with pedestrians out there, that's what I'm just, I'm just...
So, that is an option. When you get into 0% to 30% design, that's when, so that's examples for New Bern Avenue. We have a section on New Bern Avenue that's median-running transitways, the bus-only lanes are in the middle of the road. In other areas where there are constraints or it doesn't make sense to have pedestrians cross that many lanes of traffic, you can have bus-only lanes along the right side of the road. That just introduces more conflicts with turning movements and bus lanes and people staying in the right lane even though they don't need to be driving in it longer than they need to be there. So, there are considerations we can make when we get to 0% to 30% design, and there's also, you know, we'll look at traffic analysis and identify if there is need for dedicated infrastructure in that section. So, for New Bern, we have a section from Wake Med up to New Hope Road that's in mixed traffic. So, at that point, you don't have any dedicated bus infrastructure. You still have BRT stations for the rest of the way, but you don't have bus-only lanes for that section.
But another way to answer that is, if we were to just talk about Fayetteville Road from Tryon to Garner Station Boulevard, there's a possibility that we would not even program a stop because this is rapid transit, so this is going to be fewer stops more frequently and at a faster, faster speed there. So, we wouldn't necessarily have a stop that would look like that between Tryon and Garner Station.
Yeah, and actually, if you look at the major investment study that was completed in 2018 and the stops that were identified in that study, there actually isn't a stop identified between Tryon and Garner Station Boulevard. So, technically, you could do that little loop and have the station in here as opposed to out on Fayetteville.
Could turn in, okay. All right, good. Thank you. I just, pedestrian issue you mentioned, and I'm just, looking at that made me think, exactly, what are, what are the considerations, so, thanks.
Mr. Vance, you have any questions, comments?
Thinking, come back to me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Mathews?
Just one comment. Would, we had talked about Jones Sausage Road with Amazon down there opening up now and adding even more, that you were looking at the idea of running one down, which is going to come back to White Oak and it's just a back-and-forth or just part of a loop. I think it'd be, most certainly be a good idea to put that as part of the plan. Can you comment on that or?
Yes, so I believe you're referring to the, the, which just came out of the Garner Transit Study and the, the fixed bus route, the route that was identified through that which would run along 70, and it would provide that connection between Garner Station Boulevard and White Oak, and we had also discussed having essentially the shuttle service that would connect to Amazon, so that would tie it all in. Is that weird? Yeah, so through the Garner Transit Study, that was the, the route alignment that was selected, that was the preferred alignment that was selected through that study process. And so, that would directly tie into this where you would, you would be further extending the regional connection because the BRT service, which comes down to Garner Station Boulevard, could then connect to our local bus service, and that would then allow for a connection to White Oak and up to the Amazon warehouse if, you know...
That would be, that would be two, that would be making use of two different parts of the overall transit plan.
Right.
So, this, this project would end, the BRT project would end at North-South Station, and as Gabby said, anything that Garner chooses to do to act that to the existing bus service would be a different way of potentially partnering to use the transit plan funds, but it would be two different parts of the transit plan.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Couple of questions first. If you could remind me, because it's been a while since we looked at this, the integration of this with the existing work that's going to happen on 401, I don't know, 401 work starts further down or if it starts closer to the 70 split, the Super Street project, how does that tie into, does it go all the way this far up? Does it, where does that start, the Super Street stuff DOT is going to be working on?
So, my understanding is that the Phase 1 of the 401 Super Street Project, and that's from when I, my role here in Garner before, was that it comes to Anaron Court, which is just right about here, and then goes south. So, it does not quite come up to the mechanical 401 interchange. There was a second project in the STIP that did come up to there with the Super Street, but that, I can't remember exactly where that is in the schedule right now. It's not, it hasn't even started planning, I think, at this point, so it's much later down.
It is, and another way to look at that, Mr. Dellinger, is that while it could impact traditional bus service along that corridor, for BRT, even if we were at Fayetteville, we'd primarily be making one movement from Fayetteville on to, to Garner Station Boulevard, and then maybe one more movement coming back on to 401. So, we believe that, that we could work within, we know we could work within the existing 401 plan, and we think that we could either work with or influence the other part of the design to make sure it took into consideration. The bigger challenge is our traditional bus service running on the 401 corridor.
And that's sort of what I'm sort of leaning at and towards is integrating with already, road improvements that are already going to happen if we choose this route that goes down Fayetteville. My other question was, were there, are there any longer-term plans to extend the BRT further down into Wake County? Any even preliminary plans?
I know as part of...
Like within the next 15 years, I guess?
So, not further south into Wake County on Fayetteville, there is another project, again, in the STIP for the state program that has a BRT line connection from Morrisville to Clayton, and that's something that the Capital Area MPO is going to be studying more closely, the feasibility of it and what that service looks like. So, we're still working through to figure out what that service will look like, if it will look exactly like Bus Rapid Transit that we're currently working on in the initial four corridors, or what different features might it have.
Thing that we're looking for at our local transportation planning we did was being mindful when we actually get to station siting decisions, not only citing things that could interact with the current bus service from Raleigh, but also something that might be positioned well should that future BRT go down 70.
Yeah, and, I mean, I believe, last time this came up, one of my, I had multiple concerns. I've been on council eight months, and this is one, this Wilmington Street Extension is something that I've just, it boggles my mind that it's even an idea, that Tryon Road having another intersection that close to Tryon Road, then 401, that split, it doesn't even make any sense. And then you start talking about a flyover. We've seen with the Jones Sausage Road, the estimate for the cost of that is astronomical. And so, for me, and then I look at the split, like how much development can you fit between that Wilmington Street Extension that would go down and 401? That looks like dead man, that's no man's land. You can't develop in that, that's less than a quarter mile from what I'm eyeballing between that extension and 401. And then there's, you know, this notion that it's going to be slower travel and less traffic. That never happens. It always ends up being full of cars. For me, for Garner, I think this makes more sense to use Fayetteville Road as the route. If you can still use that Garner Station Boulevard loop, which I think is just a great idea, I mean, it's, it opens up a lot of opportunities for us, but that Tryon Extension, I mean, that Wilmington Street Extension coming across Tryon into Garner, for what benefit of the, I don't see the benefit of it to Garner. You know, from a development standpoint, developers will adjust to whatever you put there. They'll figure out how to make money off of Bus Rapid Transit if you put it on Fayetteville Road, and with the fact that you can still do that Garner Station Boulevard loop, the cost difference alone is enough to make sort of my mind up on which one makes more sense. I think, again, the cost-sharing element of it is the part that is, there's no answer to that one if you don't know what you're going to do with Tryon. So, 10, tens of millions of dollars, we'd have to come up with a significant portion of, I don't remember the cost for the Jones Sausage, but it was tens of millions of dollars to do that flyover. So, even if it was like 30% of that, it's like, and then for what? It's not going to a park, it's not going to a business park, it's not, it's just a big a road. So, those are my comments. I think it should go down Fayetteville Road. It makes the most sense.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Ms. Barringer, I was going to give you a shot, and then I want to hear from the town manager. Okay. Mr. Manager, I believe, did you want to?
Oh, I was just going to respond, or I guess maybe more of a question, Councilmember Dellinger's question about it going further into Wake County. I'd imagine Fuquay would have a bus circulator that might tie in somewhere and maybe even, maybe Wake Tech, I'm not sure, is that part of the conversation?
Well, there's, I mean, not in conjunction with this, there is, there is a connection to Wake Tech through the, there's an express bus through Go Raleigh...
It's just not BRT.
Or through...
Yeah, the one to Wake Tech is downtown Raleigh to Chapin Oak to Wake Tech and back. It's just, they set that loop up. Fuquay has one running down there, about, it's about two or three buses in the morning running to Raleigh to Fuquay.
Okay. Isn't a long-range, is it a long-term plan to have a BRT to all the municipalities in Wake County or those on the far western, eastern end, you know, Zebulon, those folks? Not necessarily, or just a general question, I don't...
Sure. Well, through the, the four corridors that Het walked you through in the beginning, it would just, would just be through, within the City of Raleigh jurisdiction, Town of Cary and Town of Garner, and then which, the one that Het mentioned earlier that could potentially connect out to Clayton, that, that's, I think, the only other potential BRT that I know of, but...
The town would have their circulators that would...
That's what I'm thinking about, yeah.
Potentially stop at a location and get on the BRT.
Service, service to those towns is part of, one of the, one of the other four big moves was getting service to areas that didn't have service and enhancing service, much like with our partner, City of Raleigh, we've enhanced the service that runs to Garner now, and then in September, we're going to enhance that again, have another loop running here in Garner. So, so the service you're talking about, Mayor, to the other municipalities that didn't have service is part of the overall Wake Transit Plan, but one of the other, not, not the one that involves the...
Okay, yeah, all right. I knew I'd heard that somewhere. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Vance, did I get back to you?
Yes, I was looking at, looking at both alternatives, all three alternatives, and the question, going back to what, Heck, what you mentioned earlier in reference to, it was Alternative 5, I think it was, Alternative 5 with the Wilmington Street, no, it's Alternative 6. If Alternative 6 is selected, okay, got it, I see it now. I see it now. I see it now. So there will be a connection to the Garner Road Station if Alternative 6 is connected, is selected as a way of doing that. Okay.
All right. Okay, very good.
Alternative 6, lower cost.
All right, council, good with this presentation. Were there any other items you guys wanted to cover?
I will just add that, you know, this picture may look a little scary from a pedestrian perspective, but we do have a video that was completed for New Bern Avenue at the 30% design mark that sort of highlights how pedestrians would access stations in the median. I will share it with town staff, and they can share it along with you guys. It really shows, you know, there are steps in the process to make it safe for a pedestrian to signal, to cross at a signalized intersection and get to the station. So, and all of the transit or BRT planning that we're doing is with ADA accessibility in mind, since federal dollars are involved as well. So there's a lot of things that are being thought of from a pedestrian, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure and transit user experience perspective, which is why that Wilmington Street Extension thing kind of keeps coming up where it could provide better connections. But there are opportunities either way. And again, like what Gabby said, well, this was just for discussion today, it was great to hear your feedback. We will present to City of Raleigh council for their thoughts and then come back with what their thoughts are and have another presentation to see if we can get to a LPA endorsement.
Okay, thank you, thank you again for the presentation. I'll give you one throwaway comment. I was just wondering, my own mind, you think we'll have some of this built before somebody gets old, somebody have to wheel me across there in a wheelchair or something, I don't know. But I hope it's before then.
The goal is 2027 for all four corridors.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to see you again, and thank you, Gabby. Sure enough, thank you both. I believe we have finished the major two items there, and so I believe getting some signal from council, let's go with a brief, let's see, I guess we could go into closed session and come back and do manager reports and council reports when we come back in, if we wanted to go ahead and break now, right?
That's fine, I don't really have any reports.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we, let's see, we need a motion to go into closed session, I believe, and then we'll take a recess in conjunction with that.
We're going to go into closed session per Statute 143318, 11, Subset A, Subset 3, consult with the town attorney regarding litigation, and also the correct statute for potential... A5 for potential real estate acquisition.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion probably made in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will take a 10-minute recess, and then we will be in closed session, and we'll be conferring with our attorney. Okay, we're back in regular session. The council was in closed session to deal with some litigation in regards to an attorney, and we received a report, and we also provided some instruction to the attorney in regards to a matter that is pending before the council. And also, we dealt with an issue relating to, to real estate that will come back to the council at the proper time. So we're now back in regular session, and we are now in the process of completing our agenda. We're at council reports, and so I will recognize Mr. Matthews.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer, Mr. Dillinger.
Yes, sir.
Wow, this is a record. Okay, Mr. Vance.
No, sir.
Don't break the string, okay? Well, the mayor is going to mention just one thing, don't forget that. Just to remind you that you'll be back here in about 12 hours or less, I guess, less than that. So retreat in the morning, we look forward to that.
We'll be here, we'll be...
Excuse me, you're right, we will be at G-PAC. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Singleton.
Coming out of your rear door off of Avery Street would be the most closest to where you want to be.
And just park back there at the back of the auditorium? Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
And breakfast will be available at 8:30, I believe, is that right? So, okay, don't forget that.
The council and the management team, as far as staff, no, because it's a public forum, I don't know.
Right. Yeah, okay. Be meeting on the stage. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose no, meeting is adjourned.